Excellent. Good evening, everybody. It is September 9th, 2020. And I'll start by reading our vision statement. The Ashland Public Schools cultivates the academic and social emotional growth of each student through a supportive collaborative, innovative and challenging environment. Students will develop into self motivated, resilient lifelong learners who embrace their role as responsible contributors to a global community. This meeting is being recorded by WACA Cable TV. Our order of business this evening includes our opening procedures, agenda, review and adoption. We'll have some time for public comment and our items of interest to the public and administrative items include a COVID-19 update, parking fees at AHS, vote on APS participation in MIAA athletics for fall 2020. A second reading policies including the mask policy EDCFA. Policies of first reading on the sexual harassment policy ACAB. More approvals minutes of August 6th, minutes of the August 18th tri board, minutes of August 26th acceptance of gifts, committee reports of activities, member updates, and then we will adjourn. Everybody okay with that? I'll take a roll call. And and you can also answer whether you're okay with the order of business. So Mr. Terry.
President and yes, I'm okay with the order of business.
Paul Kendall.
Here and yes.
Aaron Williams.
Here, yes.
Kathy Bates.
Yeah, here and yes.
Excellent. So we'll get started by asking whether there are any members of the public here that would like to give comment during our comment period. And if you're here and you would like to comment, if you could just raise your hand either through the screen or in a way that I can see you, I will make sure you have a chance to offer your comment for a few minutes. Anybody? Okay, seeing none, I will ask Jim to give us the COVID-19 update, please.
So there's really nothing more to report than I reported last Friday. All of our numbers and etc. will be coming out later tonight and we'll be discussing those on Fridays. I want to just reiterate to the community that on Friday mornings, eight o'clock, school committee will be meeting to discuss COVID as well as local cases and that will help, you know, inform our decisions with regard to the types of learning environments we will be in. So other than that, this is just a standard line for us. And I can, the only thing I can say is that tomorrow we will have the Massachusetts Department of Public Health and their mobile response unit. We asked to have them come out and and we have some staff voluntarily want to take the test and which is great. So we have about 50 of us across the district who've signed up to just voluntarily take the test. So we'll be doing that tomorrow. And the Commissioner of Education today mentioned that starting on Friday, there'll be more information for communities to work directly through the Department of Ed and not through the Department of Public Health for opportunities for DPH to come out to communities to test students as well as teachers and other community members. If there's concern, so which is great. It's something they've been trying to get up and running, but we're working directly through Department of Health and our local Board of Health.
Excellent.
That's really where we are.
How long does it take to get those test results back?
These will be 48 hours typically. Twenty, as Ed says, they say 24 to 72. I said, okay, so average is 48. Okay, so two days. So so we should, you know, whoever takes it, it's obviously it's private and we had to give, you know, I'm gonna do it tomorrow and think Mike is and we just thought, you know, be a good thing to do. So lead the way with it. So.
Jim, is there any delay in the state data because of Labor Day? I'm just noticing like the the 4 p.m. refresh didn't happen.
Yeah, no. So it just came out at six. There was a delay. And so the dashboard is up and running now. That information from the state would be there right now. But there's also a delay because, for instance, Ed, we have four cases that we had currently in Ashland last week who will be coming off from the rolls tonight, which are part of, you know, the the averages that the state still has. It's just the quirkiness of the system. So. But yeah, I was refreshing myself Aaron all afternoon. So.
That's I'm using the the map, the the map one for the TVL towns, but the map is still showing the 92 data.
And the map may not be updated till tomorrow. They that typically is a day behind. So.
Okay.
Yeah, and and their their update is by 6:00 p.m. on Wednesdays.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Not four.
Yeah, four for the daily dashboard, 6:00 p.m. on Wednesdays for the
For the weekend.
For the week. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. So that's that's all I have for the COVID piece.
Excellent. Thank you. So moving on then to parking fees at AHS.
So I'm just making a recommendation. We, the the school committee sets fees. Traditionally, we've had $100 parking fee at the high school. We feel it's appropriate that and that we've reduced the hundred to $50 because students won't be coming half the time on campus during those days. We we use the funding, just so we're clear on how the funding is used, is we typically, not typically, it's only used to offset part of the dean salaries because they're the ones out there checking the cars, doing parking, etc. We have, we are reduced by one dean. We had a dean resign. We are not filling that position at this point in time, again, based on where we are with hybrid and potential remote. So, you know, we feel comfortable and I feel comfortable for the year that we only charge our students half the rate, so $50 for the parking fee. We have we have sufficient funds that will help offset the salary of the of the dean by just the $50.
Does anybody have any comments or questions about that discussion?
No, I just went on asking Jim what the, you know, what the fees funded and, you know, and whether there's any. Are we look, are we expecting more students to drive this year because of different things? Or what are your, what are your thoughts on that?
No, I think, I mean, Kelly might be able to better answer. But we only have X amount to begin with. And I would say juniors and seniors typically who are allowed to drive. So we had about 100 and so I would say we had 180 kids last year almost who drove based on what I looked at for collected revenue. I would anticipate similar again. That's been pretty consistent over the years, Paul.
Kids getting their license has been a little delayed.
Sure, right.
And that fee must be due soon.
It is, but it well, you know, again, Kelly just has to be able to publicize.
Okay.
Usually by the end of September is our dead line.
Okay. Anybody else, any other discussion, questions, concerns about that? And I have no issues. It seems like a reasonable thing to do. So if there aren't any other questions or concerns, I'll take a motion.
I'll move to reduce the parking fees at Ashland High School from $100 to $50 for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Second.
All in favor, Aaron Williams?
Aye.
Kathy Bates?
Aye.
Mark Terry? Paul Kendall?
Aye.
An eye for me as well that passes. Thank you. Okay, next up, vote on APS participation in MIAA athletics for fall 2020. We had our discussion about it last week. And I don't know if any members have anything further they want to ask or say. I see Mr. Marx is on the call at the meeting. So he's here to answer any questions if you have anything further. Jim, I don't know if you have anything to add?
I will wait. I will defer until after before I make my recommendation to see if people have questions.
So I'll open it up for discussion to the committee if there's anything else to say that hasn't been said last.
Lori, there was one sort of follow up from last time of getting consensus in the TVL pod for non Gator wearing. And just if there was any progress on that with the ADs this week.
So I think that'd be Steven.
Yeah.
Yeah, there has been. Thank you, Aaron. We've had really good discussion. It seems like everyone will be on board. We just need to solidify that and get it in writing, but there was no no hesitation in any which way.
Awesome.
Yep.
Just as a follow up to that, Stephen. And I think I asked this question last week and I just want to double check on it. Is there anything else other than the mask versus Gator distinction that we talked about before? It looks like it's resolved now that is different among the schools that we'd be participating with in terms of safety standards? Or are we going to be consistent across the board at this point?
We're going to be consistent across the board. Yep.
I guess one clarifying question, the decision to play each town. Is that going to reside with you, Stephen, or is that us as the committee that's going to make that decision every week?
I think that's going to be a decision from the committee. I think we're going to look at data every week is my understanding and then we'll see where we stand. And in my conversations with the other athletic directors, every other district and every, every other group is doing the same thing. So if we're playing Holliston that week, we're going to be looking at their numbers. They're looking at ours. So that's consistent across the board as well.
Okay, we were, there were just two of us talking and didn't know who was making like who's the vote. Was it you or us? But that clarifies it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I think Lori, from my perspective, I appreciate Stephen following up on that. That was kind of my only follow up as well was what was on the status of what we're doing and making sure we're consistent both with all of our things in Ashland, but also within our pod. So I think with that and, you know, what everything that's been put in place and, you know, the fact we're going to continue this conversation and be able to have, you know, be able to make the decision that, hey, whatever is going on in another town, we do, you know, we don't think it's appropriate to play them or they're doing the same for us. As long as we're doing that and we're consistent with the with the face coverings. I didn't have any other concern.
I'll just, I'll just express my thoughts on it. Ultimately, I'm going to support Mr. Mark's recommendation. Now, I'll just say that coming into our dialogue last week, I was, I was very concerned about it. You know, I really do appreciate all that athletics offers and how important it is to kids' social emotional development. I've got a child who plays three sports through the schools and I certainly can see the difference and that that makes when he has those activities versus the in between seasons. And so I think there's a real value there, but I also, on the other hand, was very much concerned about, you know, are we, are we taking an unnecessary safety risk? Where's the balance on that? And I want to say, Stephen, I really appreciate your presentation last week. It really made me feel much more comfortable about the scenario and having the ability to talk through sort of how you're looking at it for the Ashland schools, but also to know that we really are in alignment with the other schools that we'll be participating with. And that there's sort of not a there's not a weak link in the wall, if you will, because of the things that happened over the summer with with youth sports. There's nothing to do with Swiss, you know, the rules were different in Ashland than they were in Bellingham or Hopkinen, which really kind of made it feel like, you know, nobody's really taking it all that seriously at all. So I I certainly can't say that it's not without some trepidation, but you know, certainly I can support it.
Anybody else? I won't repeat everything you just said, Mark, but that's pretty much where I'm coming from as well. I mean, I definitely had concerns and not because of anything that anybody here is doing. In fact, I think, you know, the opposite is true. You are all going over and above to make this safe and make it work. And with the well being of the students being everybody's first priority. So never was that ever a doubt. I think it's just the nature of this entire process, you know, without getting, you know, solid guidance at the federal level and then at the state level. And then, you know, the truth of the matter is, I think it's fair to say that, you know, most of us really don't have any idea about anything. And and all we can really do is our very best to, you know, move forward with what information we think we understand and try to do the best thing we can for the students. I mean, I'm reassured that we're having the weekly check in and that at any moment, if if things become, if the situation changes, we have the ability to change our minds. And again, with the students' best interest as well as the best interest of everybody else who's not playing and because we're responsible for everybody. Staff, all the other kids in the buildings, ourselves, yourselves. So this is kind of a, the whole situation is requires us to think about the needs of everybody. So I was really reassured by the presentation and all the work that you've done. And I said I wasn't going to repeat everything that Mark said, but I guess I basically just did. But anyhow, that's, that's where I'm coming from. And I know Jim, you know, wanted to say a few words before we we had take a vote. So Jim?
Actually, I don't know. No. I would just say, based on, you know, Stephen's presentation, the thoughtfulness of of the Tri Valley League Athletic Directors and high school principals, that this is a really solid plan that that does take into account the safety and well being of our student athletes and in our communities. And so I would actually recommend to the school committee that you approve the plan as presented last week by Stephen Marks.
Last chance for comments or concerns, and if there aren't any, whoever wants to make the motion.
Move to support the athletic director's recommendation with regard to athletics for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Second.
All in favor, Aaron Williams?
Aye.
Mark Terry?
Aye.
Paul Kendall?
Aye.
Kathy Bates?
Aye.
An eye for me, that passes. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Stephen.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Stephen, thanks, Kelly.
Moving on to policies, this is our second read for the mask policy, the EDCFA policy. And I know Mark was talking about referring back to something in the policy about regarding language on masks and that sort of thing. And I think that was the only concern that was brought up the last time, if I'm recalling that properly.
Yeah. So so Lori, I'll, I'll share my screen and kind of go through those. There's a couple, a couple of change, you know, a couple of changes since since our last time. So we also had some other feedback from Diane Davis. And so some of the changes are just clarification, clarification changes and contextual changes. So in places where we're talking about the, you'll see in several places where we say now students, faculty and staff. There was some question about making sure when we talk about exceptions or enforcement of things, who exactly we're talking about. So for instance, when you talk about needing a medical physician note, it was added right here that we're talking about our student staff and faculty, right? The point was made that if a visitor comes and they have a medical exception, we're not going to turn them away because they can't produce a physician's note. We're asking everyone to comply, but you know, the standard, you know, medical exemptions that are across the state apply. So that wasn't the only changes aside from what you alluded to that we added from Mark's perspective. So this was the language that we added. So it basically just talks about that anything you have on your mask, you know, we're asking that you try not to make it disruptive or distracting. And then we say it has to comply with any other relevant school policies and guidelines in the handbooks related to clothing and apparel. So those are the only, those are the only changes that were from our last time.
So just, yeah, do you mind if I just make a comment on that language, Paul?
Yep.
So that the, I think, I think I'm struggling a little with the word distracting and the 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 thought I have in my head and it's that legal hat that I can never take off is First Amendment issues. And there's all sorts of case law out there around sort of what people can wear on clothing or pins and things like that. And that that body of case law certainly protects the school district's right to restrict speech, which would include markings on masks. That's disruptive. So I'm not worried about the word disruptive, but the distracting, which I suppose you could argue is something, you know, akin to a low level disruption. I just worry about the ambiguity in that because yellow could be distracting, a word could be distracting. And I personally just feel a little more comfortable if it just went from took the word distracting, wore out those two words so that it would be, should not be disruptive and must comply with, etc. That'd be my one request to change.
Okay, yeah. And and I hear you. I guess the only reason I put it in there is, and one of the things to highlight is this section is should not, not must not. And so we're not restricting, saying it, the whole purpose is please don't try to get really cute with your mask, you know, and say, hey, I have a mask that looks like an ape or you just, you know, please keep the eye on the ball. And so so to me, that's where that that was important for us to have some language like that. Listen, you know, and I totally get what you're saying with First Amendment stuff. And and for me, when I'm talking with Kathy and Jim about the policies, I I kind of, some, some policies fit into two distinct buckets very clearly. One is like our next policy where there's you know, regulations, it's got to be triple checked by, you know, the lawyers and things like that. And then there's ones that are more about conveying our expectations. And, you know, stuff like that. So this, this one falls leans more towards that. And that's why I thought those would be in there. I'm I'm fine taking distracting out, but I I also like it in there to say, you know, try not to be, you know, too cutesy and crazy such that, you know, Warren's going to have a difficult time enough, not if, if everybody's trying to get really cutesy with their masks and, you know, making it more and more difficult to have constructive educational days. So I'm happy with whatever the group thinks. But that was the reason for making sure we we add the kind of things that kind of stretched that a little bit. I understand.
Yeah, and I do appreciate the time and effort put into commitment language satisfied, attorney raised. Thank you.
I mean, I think it deserved a little bit more discussion on what we're considering distracting and like the example that you gave, Paul, like I bought one of the ape gators and then realized like, oh, maybe like I bought it for the kids thinking like one's a shark and one's an ape and then realized like, oh, I could never wear this out because of also like what's going on in the world right now. And that would be really tacky. But, you know, like I just put this on, not that we are allowing gators, but what if this was a mask? It's a skeleton face, you know, like.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, from my perspective, this give, this allow, this, this gives some language in there that allows a conversation to be had, right? That, hey, if the parents reading this and, you know, they get an email from a teacher saying, hey, does, does Jane have a different mask she could wear? Because, you know, there's a lot of giggling around, you know, and so it's something along those lines. It's not like we have to describe it, you know, but when there's, you know, and that kind of goes to, you know, I guess it would fall under disruptive, right? And that's why our other policies do use the word disruptive and that, and that's what you alluded to, Mark. But it's more around that. It's, it's not like we have to define it, but it's more from my perspective at least. The conversation that a teacher or Pete or anyone else can have saying, okay, this is becoming distracting in class and can we do something about it? And making sure they can have, have that conversation and the expectations out there. But like I said, I'm I'm fine if everybody wants to remove it, but that's the that was the thought.
Could we, at the beginning of that sentence where it says any, could you put plain masks are encouraged? And that way it's not required, but that that and leave it, and you could leave or I don't mind it whether you leave it or take it out. I guess it's probably from a legal standpoint and defaulting to Mark's view to get rid of the or the ambiguity. But would it be better, be like you said, this policy is sort of like a guidance one versus the other type that you had said, so putting maybe plain masks encouraged?
I, yeah, I'm fine with doing whatever everybody wants to do.
Kathy?
Kathy, Aaron. Well, I was just thinking. I mean, I don't think I would want to say just plain. I think, yeah, I'm fine. I'm fine with taking out distracting or I think I would leave it, but I would leave it the way it's written because honestly, it would be kind of fun for the kids. They could still have something that's not plain and not distract, distracting or disruptive. So you know, letting them be a little, you know, letting them have fun picking out a mask that, you know, so if we say plain, what does that mean? Just one solid cut, you know what I mean? So.
I agree. It could be distracting. So it's like, okay, so mine has stripes on it. Is that not playing? You know, so, so I think it, it is difficult when you say it, when we say it like that.
So maybe we should just go with the legal perspective. What, what do you think, Lori?
Um, what I think is that we could talk for four hours about what's distracting, what's not distracting. And that's also what could happen if somebody wants to bring up an issue with that word still in the policy. I totally understand where, where you, the policy subcommittee was going with this. But I think taking it out, we still achieve, accomplish what we set out to accomplish. Yeah. And I think what distracting actually really means is it's distracting to the point where it became disruptive. Because what's distracting to me might not be distracting to you, but we're only really going to be concerned about it if it gets in the way of delivering education. So I would highly recommend that we just take it out, stop talking about it and and the policy still does everything that everything that we needed to do.
That's why she's the chair.
Everybody, I mean, that's, that's where I'm coming from, but I guess we still need to get a consensus on that.
I'll go with that. Let's do that. Take out distracting or.
All right. So we're striking those two words. Otherwise, we're good with the rest of it?
Yes. Great job, you guys. Thank you.
Excellent.
Do you want a motion to approve?
Thank you. It's second reading, so we're ready to vote on this.
Yeah. So I moved to approve and I've lost the track of the code on it, but I've moved to approve the base coverings policy, policy EBCFA as amended.
Do we have a second?
All second.
Thank you. All in favor, Paul Kendall?
Aye.
Mark Terry? Kathy Bates?
Aye.
Aaron Williams?
Aye.
An eye for me, that passes. Thank you. And then the next policy is a first reading so that we won't be voting, but we will be discussing policy ACAB, sexual harassment.
All right, I'll bring this one up. So you all received the, both the clean and the red line version of this. So this is based, as I mentioned last time. I'll show my screen here. So this is based on not the MASC's policy where they actually combined the it with the bullying policies. So this was another one that we got from our attorney. It still needed quite a bit of work. The main things we did to it were some of the phrasings and more structural and making sure there's clarity. For example, this section here that has the definitions. The definitions were commingled all over the policy in mills of paragraphs and things like that. So we kind of took it out, put it up on top. We also tried to reduce some of the redundancies, particularly around timelines. There were several places where a timeline was listed and then literally a paragraph or two below, it was listed again. And we really thought that that's, that's just a problem waiting to happen from a management of this policy standpoint over time. So right now, what you have does not have timelines in it. We will, before we, I think it, you know, and I'll defer to the group as well, but I think the timelines being so important that before we vote, our second reading should have the timelines that Jim wants in there because that is a, something that we've heard from the attorney is very important about these policies. So while we haven't put it in there initially, because you do kind of need to do the flow chart with this because each step has certain times. So So you, you do the initial response to both respondent and complaint within a certain amount of time. You, you do, you collect evidence, people, you then, before you do your issue report, you have, you have to provide that evidence, they have 10 days to review the evidence, respond. You also have a certain amount of time for each witness. And so you really have to try to, you know, figure out those timelines. And so that's, that's on Jim's, Jim's plate to do that before our, our second reading. And so those were the primary, it's, it was, you know, this, this was very much regulations-based, but it was more to make it readable and understandable for someone to navigate. And this has been reviewed by our attorney. And so what, what you're seeing here has, has their blessing. I mean, is there any questions about it, concerns? I know, Mark, you probably are very familiar with these types of policies.
Yeah, I've got a model that I'm working on for clients, it's been sitting on my desk for two months, so maybe tomorrow.
You're wait, you're waiting to vote on this one?
I was waiting for you to write it so I can steal it. I think one, just for people's benefit, one of the things that probably is driving some of, I assume it's John or Liz's recommendations, is that the, there was a significant overhaul of Title IX regulations a couple of months ago that went into effect actually on August 15th. And it really, to get policies up to speed, does require some modification. So I'm sure to the extent you're seeing things that are referencing Title IX, and I saw some of the additions that were put in here, those are, that are likely coming from, from those revisions, regulations. So it's a good time for us to be looking at this.
Yeah, although, just so you know, all the red lines are, are revisions to our attorney version.
Anybody else before I ask my question?
No, and, and also I'll just, so some of the other things we, we clarified on some of the due process stuff, investigations, and particularly the appeals, the appeals were not clear on who could, you know, we added both that the, when appeal is heard, that whoever's hearing the appeal cannot be the person who made the initial determination, can't be the Title IX coordinator and can't be the, the investigator. So we kind of clarified that more the way it was written before. It wasn't, there was, there was lots of ambiguity in, in certain places like that, so we, we just tightened those things up as well. Do you see the other question, Lauren?
Oh, yeah, I'm trying to think about how I want to raise it. This is absolutely not a politically charged question. It's more of a process question. But my understanding, and I, I definitely do not want this to, to turn into a political discussion, and it would not be appropriate if that were the case. But, so my understanding though is, and it's process, because that this change in Title IX is a result of, of the current administration kind of pulling back on some, I don't know if rights are the right word, or it, it narrows, it narrows either the definition of what was considered sexual harassment or narrow, it, it changes the process in a way that fewer people, I think, have access to using the law to make their case. And then that, please correct me if I'm misunderstanding that. And the law is the law, so obviously if the law has changed and we need to get our policies in line to modify that law, I understand the reasoning behind that. However, since we are so close to the possibility that we might have a new administration that may take another look at this, is there any value to, to waiting? Or is it, is the process just where we, we're just adapting to what we have in front of us? And if things change again several months from now, we will adapt back?
Right, so I'll let Mark speak to the, the changes overall. But we were technically supposed to have this done August 14th.
Okay.
So I don't think waiting is a good idea. And Mark, you can jump in on that too, but then I'll defer to him for, you know, whether your characterization of the changes is accurate, and I wouldn't get way personally. You know that.
So I guess, Lori, I would, I would agree with Paul's view that we should update the policy now. I mean, for no other reason, it's based on regulations changed. So we don't want to have a policy that's inconsistent with the regulations, even if those regulations change two months from today.
Sure.
I'd say more broadly, you know, these are regulatory changes, even if somebody undertook to change them. I mean, that really wouldn't happen until January anyway, right? If there were a change in the administration, it takes months and months for those kind of changes to be implemented. And I guess the last comment I'd make is the Title IX regulations and regulations put out by different, different agencies bounce back and forth with administrations, and they ebb and flow in different directions. And it's almost like if you, if you wait until you get to the next round, you know, by the time we get all those regulations updated and changed, we'll probably get to the end of another election cycle.
So we are now.
Yeah, so, I mean, right, so these regulations have been things that have been talked about for the result of things that we've talked about for four years. And they finally got done in June, I think, or May. So my advice would be, you know, let's, let's modify our policy to be consistent with the rules now. And when they change, and they will, one way or the other, at some point, we'll, we'll deal with it again then.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and outside of what you were talking about, Lori, I'm comparing this to our current policy. If nothing else, this is much more detailed than what our current policy is.
Yeah, and I appreciate all the work. I know, you know, one of the reasons why we didn't talk about it last time is because you guys were really working hard on getting this right, and I know you've had it reviewed by council and so forth. So the policy itself looks great, and I know you did everything you can to make it fit into what it is that we're trying to comply with. I just, it was really more of a process thing, like, do we need to do this right now? You know, is it, lies and so forth, but, but my question's been answered, so thank you. Anybody else for this first read? Are we good with what we're seeing for now?
No, Kathy, do you want to add anything?
Just, thanks, Paul, just that I will have that timeline for the next read. I'm working through a flow chart, if you will, of, of, of how we have to go through an investigation.
Okay.
Appeal process.
Laurie, I, I understand where you're coming from, but if you, I, I think it's, it's a good, it's a good policy that, that we have right here. And I think, you know, the flow of it and the definitions of it and what, what's supposed to happen and, you know, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's a good policy.
Yeah, good work, you guys. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right, so we're not voting, so we can move on to the next, do you have any warrant approvals, Kathy? You're on mute.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Let me just find, let me just find my wording, hold on.
Sure.
Okay, I got it. Between August 27th and September 4th, I, Kathleen Bates, authorized by my signature, payables in the amount of $291,942.05. This includes general fund expenses of $174,215.01, revolving expenses of $12,822.66, and grant expenses of $45,985.33, and capital expenses of $58,919.05. Finally, I authorize payroll in the amount of $1,074,743.68.
Thank you, Kathy.
Welcome.
Okay, now moving on to the minutes. Now, I only have the August 6th. Did anybody have?
Yeah.
Eighteenth or the 26th?
No, Karen said those would be coming later. They hadn't finished them.
Okay, thank you. I missed that, but yes.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
So we're just dealing with the minutes of August 6th this evening. Does anybody have any changes or comments?
I don't have any.
All right, anybody else? I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the regular session minutes of August 6th, 2020, as presented.
Mark?
All in favor, Mark?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Erin?
She said, she said.
Aye.
Yeah, and aye for me as well, that passes. Thank you. And do we have any gifts and donations this evening? You're on mute, Jim, if you do.
We do. The residents at Valley Farm, the residents and staff, $503.60 for 20 new children's backpacks containing notebooks and pencils. Mary Hettinger, $200. A Toshiba Satellite Laptop and Charger. Wait, $75.49 to Ashland High School Student Council. And wait, again, $134.81 to Ashland High School Student Council for a total of $913.90.
Do we have a motion to accept the gifts and donations?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Erin? Paul?
Aye. Want to try that again, Erin?
Yeah.
Aye.
That was really quick.
That was, yes. Okay, we're at the end. Many member updates? Anything anybody want to share? Paul?
So today we did submit the schematic design report to the MSBA.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'll be coming around to get a signature from you and Jim for the local actions letter that will, they put a placeholder in, in the submission for that, and, and so we'll get signed copies of that. Also, some of you I know came to the training last night from the Office of Campaign Political Finance relative to ballot questions. I just scheduled a, something with the Ethics Commission as well for Conscient interest training for the 22nd. So I'll send that out as well.
He was good, Paul. Thanks for arranging that.
Yeah, that was helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Anybody else want to share anything? All right, action items, you know, we're going to be meeting again on Friday, every Friday, for the foreseeable future. And that's it, unless anybody has anything else.
And just so you know, you can put that in your calendar. The, the meeting invite is, doesn't change, so it's a reoccurring Zoom meeting, so it's not a new link every Friday, so.
Okay, good to know. All right, I'm ready for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make one.
Thank you, Mark. Second. Who wants to second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, Erin?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Aye for me, and thank you, everybody, and have a good night.
All right, thank you. See you Friday.